We'll go ahead and call the work session to order. This time I'll turn it over to Ms. Abeski.
Good afternoon, Board. We have, it's not a lengthy agenda, but some of the items within the agenda may be time-consuming this afternoon. Some of the information and material we'll be reviewing are relatively new as well. So, I ask, you know, as we go through this, you bear with me and we go through it together. So, the first item I have is communications to the Board under Director's comments. I will be highlighting this evening that on November the 11th, we will be finally hosting our ribbon cutting and open house at West Ridge, beginning at 4:30 that afternoon until 7:00 that evening. What I would report on West Ridge is that we have finally gotten the auditorium. That facility is complete enough to where we are utilizing that. There are still just bits and pieces going on in the building, but those things are going well. We did receive, after months of waiting, our shelving and our library circulation desk for the Commons area, which arrived Monday, and this week has been being installed. We do have the final furniture for the building being shipped on November the 8th. So, we've been caught up into the shipping dilemma as well with things that we lacked, final pieces at West Ridge. But we do have shelving, which has gone in. I was down there Tuesday afternoon, and I think Charlie's probably been there since I have. I don't know if you've been in the Commons to see the shelving that has been installed, but it does look very nice, and I think you'll be pleased when you see that. I am glad that we've waited to have the open house until these pieces were complete and we're able to allow people to go to all parts of the building in the interior and see these, see things as well. Outdoor, we have got some additional paving that has taken place here in the last month, some additional sidewalks. The grass on both the softball, baseball fields have been completed, and those areas are looking good. So, I think we're getting closer and closer to completion. The...I would ask Charlie, do you have anything that you would add to that about West Ridge?
No, they're waiting. The back, the baseball field, that retention pond back there, they put riprap in there today to make it compliant. They were working on it. They may finish it up tomorrow. Waiting on some stuff from P deck on the front, on the flow rate and stuff like that. Still got some seeding to do. They were seeding and strolling today. Final punch list, or one of the punch lists was going on the baseball field today. It's pretty much complete, the baseball building is. So, it's getting close.
I would agree, and thank you, Charlie. I didn't make the progress meeting today, but I knew that, I went through there last night, and I knew that we were getting close. So, moving forward, and we'll advertise the open house widely because we do know that we have not only parents, but others who are anxious to tour the building. And we will have several groups on hand, ambassadors, who can lead tours through the building, as well as myself and others. We will also be hosting the retired, Sullivan County retired teachers luncheon there on December the 4th, and providing tours for them as well. So, I'm anxious to, for our retired teachers group to see the building and enjoy the facility as well. Coming up, November 24th, 25th, and 26th, school will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday. I can't believe I'm sitting here talking about Thanksgiving. Time seems to go quicker than ever these days. Today, we have had cross-country runners from Sullivan East and West Ridge at the state cross-country meet, competing. I don't have results at this time, but hopefully I will have those soon, and we will be able to have them, as well as the Sullivan East volleyball team, at our December Board meeting. We will have quite a bit of student recognition that evening. We will also have our Christmas card contest winners here that evening, and I look forward to that. Additionally, tomorrow evening, West Ridge High School, in its first year, will be actually hosting and competing in a first-round state football playoff game against Cleveland High School. Pretty proud of them and what they have been able to accomplish. That, that group of coaches have, Mr. Hull talks about the things that have been accomplished. We have lots of leaders amongst our students who are doing great things as well. That is all I have. Chairman Jones, as far as the Board, the Director's comments with one addition. I have been spending, as I've told you in my weekly update, a considerable amount of time working individually with principals, meeting with them, my staff and I, individuals on, some individuals on the staff. These meetings have been very productive, very good meetings. We've had lots of good conversation, and it's always good when you can meet with a group of people, but when you can break that group down and have one-on-one meetings, it even contributes more to the conversation. So, I will be finishing those up. I have one left, which will be next week, and I'll be finishing that up. So, a lot of good information has come out of those, and it was well worth the time spent with the principals. So, Chairman Jones, that completes my report.
Can I ask one question? Just a quick question about the ceremony, the open count of the ribbon cutting. Is it open to everyone, or is it just a select few? Because I've been asked, I was like...
It is open to anyone who wants to attend, and it, it won't be a lengthy ceremony. It'll be a short ceremony, very similar to the one that we had at Sullivan East Middle School. And it is on Veterans Day. We have several programs that day, and we will make sure that we have a portion of our ceremony which recognizes and honors our veterans as well.
Thank you.
Let's review the calendar for a couple of things before we get into the rest of the work session. TSBA meeting is November 18th through the 20th. Is everyone planning on going to TSBA meeting?
Is it Thursday night, the night we stay on night, or is it Friday the first night?
Thursday night, I think was, I believe.
I mean, I said Thursday and Friday, Friday and Saturday.
That's what Chrissy just told me.
Okay. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. There is a recognition on Saturday night. There's a meeting there, and we're, we are a candidate for...
We won.
I know.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
The middle school recognition.
Sorry.
Did they award the U-TR, I haven't seen anything about the U-Trust there.
They'll, they'll do it there.
That's Thursday, I guess that's Friday night, isn't it? I'm not sure.
I think so. U-Trust is Friday night.
I never go to it, but...
I always go. Ball loves it. You all know that idea.
But anyway, make, make sure you've got that on your, your calendars, and that's going to tie into something else here just in a minute. I show December the 2nd as our next Board meeting. Is that what everyone has, first Thursday? Do you want to do a work session or do it all together? Do I hear anybody who wants an individual work session the week before? So, we'll do a work session on December the 2nd, and also the regular meeting on December the 2nd. Now, I need you to get your calendars out because we have to come up with some dates for a, an appeal to the Board. We have to try to have probably four different dates for the legal appeal, and I'm going to talk about that process just in a minute. The, I personally would like to have it before January the 1st, but we know that that may not be possible. But we do need to look and see if we can come up with some dates of the Hawn appeal. And what we'll do is to give those dates to our attorney, Chris McCarty, and he'll share with Virginia McCoy, and look at her calendar and try to come up with dates. So, the dates that you give me needs to be dates that you can attend, because this is one of those that is urgent, that we all be here. So...
So, I guess we need to look after the depositions.
Well, the...
It's a pretty tight window from that to the end of the year.
Okay. I can tell you what's the next step, and maybe I need to tell you those steps first, and then you can look at your calendar and see what the dates are. Within 20 days of October the 26th, we will receive the transcripts, the written transcripts. Within 20 days of October the 26th, and that means by December the 15th, or, I'm sorry, by November the 15th, we'll have the transcripts. The appeal will be based on the written record only, and that's important for us to know that as we get these transcripts. And I have no clue how thick the notebooks will be, but you will have a printed copy of the transcripts, and Matthew tells me that they can be really lengthy. And I would encourage you to take those notebooks with you to the meeting in Nashville. That would give you time to read through those. We cannot discuss those, but you can take those with you and, and read the transcripts. And it's crucial that we all read the transcripts, because the appeal will be based on the written record only. There will be no new information that is given to us on the night of the appeal. And those present on the night of the appeal will be, Pat will be here as our attorney. Chris McCarty will be here as the attorney for, be for Dr. Cox, but...
Director.
As for the director. And then Virginia McCoy will be here as the attorney for Matthew Hawn. And the information that will be given on that night, Mrs. McCoy will be given a chance to present her side of the case, which is, again, based on the written record, and that will be fairly brief. And then Chris McCarty will respond to her comments or questions that she may have. The Board then is open to questions about the transcript, not, not open to questions of any witnesses or anything of that nature, but if you have a question about something you've seen in the transcript. But in, in all probability, the number of questions will be very simple, because, again, you have the written record there, and you've had a chance to, we'll have had a chance by then to go through. Now, when it comes time then for deliberation, here's the three things that can happen. I will ask for a motion, and the motion can be one of three things. One, to affirm Attorney Conder's ruling. He was the judicial hearing officer. The second one will be to overturn his ruling, or the third would be to modify his ruling. But I will ask for a motion after you've read the transcripts and after we've heard from Ms. McCoy and from Chris McCarty. And then the Board will vote. And then, from there, it goes into a legal process depending on how the Board votes. Now, at that time, if we do have a seventh member of the Board, the seventh member of the Board will hear the case just like we six hear the case. I've clarified that already. Now, I don't know that we'll have a seventh member by then, but if we do, then they will be given a copy of the written record, and then they will have to hear the case just as we do. Give me questions about the procedures. I participated in the telephone conference with Chris McCarty to make sure I understood those, and made notes of what we were to do and not to do, but it's crucial that we not talk about it, the case itself, ahead of time. We can talk about the process, but we cannot talk about the details of the case. Mike, you had a question?
Yeah. If we don't have a seventh member, what happens in the event that there's a 3-3 time? Maybe that's a question for Mr. Hull.
Well, it would be my thought that it would just, it would remain as is. In other words, it takes, it takes a, an affirmative vote to change. That would be...
If, if the motion, if the motion were to dismiss, and it's a 3-3 time, then the motion would carry with 3-3, because it'd have to, there would not be a majority, and same thing for the others. So, the 3-3 would leave it at Conder's vote.
That's what I would do.
Yeah, that's...
So, it takes four to either overturn or modify?
Take, and basically it takes four to, to accept his recommendation or his ruling. It's not a recommendation, it's a ruling that he's made. So, we will be, we'll be making a motion based on his ruling, not on his recommendation. His ruling is for, is for dismissal, but, again, this Board has three options when it comes to actually making a motion. And, again, it will be mainly me opening the meeting, just like we normally do, going through the process, then Virginia McCoy presenting whatever information she wants us to get from the transcripts, and then Mr. McCarty presenting any points that he wants to present based on the transcript. And, again, I have to emphasize that there cannot be any new information presented by either side, and that's why it's critical that you read the transcripts ahead of time.
At this point in the process, who's the moving party now, isn't it?
Who's the, well, the, Chris McCarty will be considered the prosecutor, so I'm not sure what you mean by...
No, I, I think that they're the, the ones who appeal are the moving party.
At this point, in the beginning, we were, right?
Right. They're, they're the ones asking for relief.
So, Chairman Jones, if you, if I understand correctly, we expect to have the transcripts by November the 15th?
Yes, and I would, I think, based on what he said the other day, that we'll probably have them either by this Friday, which is tomorrow, or by sometime next week.
At the late of the 15th.
Yes. Because he said we've got 20 days as of October the 26th. That's what the law is, which is written. They have 20 days to, to get those to us, and it's best that we have those in a notebook or several notebooks, as Mike has, or as Matthew has alerted me to that it may be, and that we would go through and, and read those. So, when we look at our dates for having the appeal, we need to look probably after December the 1st, I mean, after Thanksgiving being, I guess, of dates that you might want to consider. Now, the possibility of meeting earlier in the day, it doesn't have to be at 6 o'clock in the evening. If you come up with dates of where we can, and Mr., Mark, you're going to be retired by then, so...
Yeah. I hate to give up on my Saturdays, but I'll, I'll have six a week by then.
But we can meet earlier in the day, and there's, there's some good things about that of being able to be, be more rested, especially if you can find dates that, that are available for you.
Is there, it doesn't really matter, I'm just more of a curious thing. Do we have any idea, I mean, the process takes, I imagine it can take quite a while. Do we have any idea as far as, is it, were we looking at hours, or can it possibly be more than days, or is it just...
No. I, I asked, I asked that question too, because I thought it was crucial that we know that, but Chris anticipates probably an hour or less.
Okay.
Because the appeal by Ms. McCoy will be, the comments will be short, maybe 15 minutes. Now, I can't speak for her, but I guess it could be longer, but I asked the same question.
I would always be cautious about saying that any, what any lawyer has to say is going to be short.
You can poke him now.
But, but it's, it's not anticipated that it would be, since there's no new information being provided.
Okay. Thank you.
And if you have questions on the transcript, of course, that could, you know, prolong it, but as...
I think that'll contribute to the length of time.
As, he anticipated, he said it would not be a lengthy one, but that may be wishful thinking on his part, but...
For, for Matthew and myself, I guess this is very similar to the Court of Appeals, and this is the kind of argument that you have there, the arguments before the Supreme Court, and, and they often limit it to 15 minutes or so. I guess that's up to the court, depending on the case, but it's a...
He mentioned 15 minutes. I, I didn't know if that was a suggested timeframe or a requirement, but he did mention 15 minutes.
But that's sort of the typical thing, and then you do your thing and make your argument, and they say, "Thanks, next case." So, it usually is not a, that's not a lengthy process.
Chairman Jones, just to get the ball rolling, I think for everyone's sake, the sooner the better, that we can have closure, whichever direction that this may fall. Could we look at the week after, immediately after Thanksgiving, the 29th, 30th, first and, and second? We already had the work session scheduled for 4:30 on the 30th, so that could be one of the times that we use, and then we could do a different time on the 29th, a different time on the 1st, and then maybe earlier in the afternoon on the 2nd, and that would be your, the four dates. But, again, I'm just making that suggestion.
And keep in mind, these dates have to be accepted by...
Absolutely.
Both Chris and by Virginia McCoy. And I'm good with all those dates that you just mentioned of...
Tuesdays and Thursdays would be best for me, any time of the day, Tuesday or Thursday, but I'm just going out there. I can probably do anything. I just know those days are probably the easiest. I don't have to grant that to anyone.
Okay, let's, let's just see what, Tuesdays and Thursdays for you, Mark. Paul?
I'm fearing it's good.
Paul, he's looking at that, Matthew.
You're talking 29th, 30th, first, or the 2nd?
Yes, she, Mark said the Tuesdays and Thursdays, so that would be November the 30th or December the 2nd, which is regular Board meeting.
But, but please, I, I'm flexible, so I mean, those, those guys are got...
This is my, my four days I have to leave work early. If that's what everybody else can do, I can figure it out.
When I, I've got a feeling that, that they won't accept that week, as close as it is to Thanksgiving, I'm just guessing. So, we need to pick, actually, two or three weeks. So, if you can look at your calendars, and even if it's Tuesdays and Thursdays for three weeks in a row there, and, because the sooner we get these to Chris McCarty, the sooner we'll know whether or not Virginia McCoy can do those.
Even though on Wednesdays is final, for me, I'm hoping those three days would be pretty easy.
Do you think of just sending them like the three weeks after Thanksgiving?
That, that was just my thought of if we could...
Well, I think we're throw out there the 30th, the 1st, the 6th, the 7th, unless that conflicts with Mr. Robinson or Mr. Spivey, their, their work schedules.
Like you said, November the 30th, December the 1st, did you say? That's Wednesday?
And I guess, of course, we could, we could do it earlier in the day on the 2nd when we got something scheduled for 4:30, depending on Mr. Robinson or Mr. Spivey.
Let's throw out the dates then, November the 30th, December the 1st, December the 8th, December the 6th, and December the 13th, and December the 15th.
You actually jumped to Monday, Wednesday.
Yeah, I thought Mike called for the 1st. Did he, he said...
Well, that was just those weeks. I don't, I'm scheduled, I'm booked on the 13th, and the 15th, the 16th, and 17th. Of course, a lot of us will be scheduled for depositions or, or meetings on the 11th, on the 13th, and the 16th and 17th.
Okay, well, Mark goes out, then, okay.
As the, the depositions. So, that leaves the 30th, the 1st, the 29th, the 30th, the 1st, 6th, 7th. And, again, that Tuesday would be open unless it conflicts with work schedules, which it probably would.
All right, November the 29th, November the 30th. December the 9th is a Thursday if you want to do, put that down as an option. Matthew, what days are...
It's just a day-by-day thing with me that I've been looking the whole time. If we want to say a specific day, I can tell you.
He asked me to give him four dates.
I could make the 30th work, or the 1st, or...I can't do the 6th. I know I can't do that day. I could do the 8th.
You can or can't?
I, I can do the 8th.
The 8th?
Yeah, the only one so far I couldn't do would be December 6th. Possibly the 13th.
13th is out for...
Okay.
For some who are involved in something else.
Sure. Did you, did you say the 15th was going up?
Do you have the 14th? I can't do the 15th as the only day. I can't. Hello?
What time are we thinking we might do it?
Hold, can you call Ms. Buckles? I'm in the, I'm in the Board meeting. Jared, let's go call you.
I could do the 14th, I think.
So, you said you could do the 30th, the 1st, the 8th, and the 14th?
Mm-hmm.
Paul?
You said the 30th, the 1st, the 8th, and the 14th.
Right.
30th and 1st would be hard for me to leave work two days that week. We'd only have one.
I only, I only need one.
That's what I'm saying, like, we got our regular meeting on the 3rd. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Same week, yeah.
Yeah, okay. If you could do the 1st, we could always reschedule that December the 2nd regular meeting if we had to.
Yeah, 'cause I don't...
If, I mean, that's one they pick.
Yeah. Now, if that's an option, that'd be fine with me. I just don't want to, you know, leave two days in the same week. And that's what we're going, 30th, the 1st, the 8th, or the 14th.
Right. And I don't know if they, if they will accept any of those or not. He said it could be up in January before they can work it out.
That's all.
So, can you do those four, Mark?
You said the 14th, right?
Yes. Mary? Mike?
Are we talking midday or after, for those two guys? Is it afternoons probably, or...
If you had to do it in the mornings, or y'all...
If it was the 30th or the 1st, the evenings would work well. I could go in and work late, I guess, depends on how early you're going to do it.
Let's, let's try to settle on the dates and let them then come up with the time if they can, and, and... Let's, let's try to settle on the dates and let them then come up with a time if they can, and, and probably, probably evening's going to be best for them, be my guess. Uh... Pat, have you got those notes down on?
I do.
November the thirtieth, December the first, December the eighth, and December the fourteenth.
Okay.
And you'll commu- you'll communicate with, uh, Chris?
I will.
And we will too, just as a, as a, as follow-up. We talked to him the other day, but just make sure we're all together on those dates then, so...
In fact, I'll do that right here in a minute.
Okay. And he'll check with, uh, his calendar, and then he'll check with Virginia McCoy's calendar. He said her calendar is pretty booked right now. So if we, if we don't get that week, uh... we've got to come up with either late Janu- I mean, late December or early January. But I think everyone would rather go ahead and get the appeal over with. Okay, any question, any other questions on the appeal, the process, or the possible dates? And as soon as we know something, uh, the information will come from Pat. This is attorney-client privilege, so any communication, uh, dealing with the appeal comes through Pat, so we'll be, we'll be clear on that. And, uh, if it's just about a date or something, you can check with, uh, Appleton on it. Anything else on the appe- on the appeal process? Back to your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next item on the agenda, and again, we're still in the work session, so this is our discussion time. Uh, we have three items on unfinished business, and all three are relative to our properties, Blountville Elementary Middle, Quinell Heights Middle, and Sullivan Gardens Middle, and Mr. Hull is going to give a report there, uh, and then I'll follow up with, uh, new business.
Okay. Uh, well, trying to bring you up to date on, uh, we'll start with the Blountville property. I think I gave you the, uh, title report last time, but to summarize, uh, that, it's, uh, twenty-six point seven acres, uh, basically, uh, it, it is, there's, I guess what I would call several parcels, uh, different deeds, different, uh, dates of acquisition and so forth. Uh, ten point six eight acres, uh, is deeded to the Board of Education. There's another one point four nine deeded directly to the Board of Education. The twelve and a quarter acre part, which is, uh, basically the football field, uh, was acquired, uh, through, uh, an eminent domain suit, uh, that was brought by the county. Uh, and then there's five point one acres as surveyed off for which there's no apparent, uh, uh, record of the title. Uh, and as I've said in the past, uh, particularly schools that have been there a long time, this is not unusual. I guess it's unusual that we don't have any deed, but, uh, they will be, uh, they'll have all kinds of, uh, names on the deed. Uh, it's not unusual to have some that say Sullivan County, some that say the Board of Education. Uh, it is a little unusual not to have a deed at all, but, uh, I think it would be, uh, clear that, uh, the Board of Education has title to that, uh, part, uh, if by no, uh, other reason, by adverse possession. So, uh, that's not particularly concerning to me. And approximately one acre that the library sits on there. So, um, that's sort of the status of the title. Of course, there is a, uh, sorry. A, uh, document in the title record that's called an easement to the, uh, Whiteside Lodge, uh, Masonic Lodge. Uh, it was made in nineteen forty-nine. As, as you know, they occupied, uh, uh, some rooms, uh, on the second floor, I believe, for many number of years. Uh, they've certainly been, uh, uh, good, uh, fellow occupants and, uh, good neighbors and, and, uh, in a, in a number of other situations, they've been, uh, instrumental in helping get schools, uh, going, and, uh, so, uh, I think we've had over the years a good relationship with them and continue to do so. Uh, this particular document, uh, I did hand out copies of that easement, and I'll, I don't have copies for everybody tonight. I'll read that to you. Uh, says, "Said Lodge is to pay no rent upon said Lodge rooms, but are to hold and use the rooms as their own as long as said school building shall be in existence. And the, in the event of the destruction of said building by fire or other casualty, similar rooms are to be provided in any building replacing the same. The privilege of using the cafeteria is granted, uh, to the party of the second part, which is the Lodge, so long as same shall be used in such manner and such times as not to interfere with the use of the same by the school." Now, that is a perfect example of some, uh, lawyer, uh, language right there from nineteen forty-nine that, uh, uh, sounds like, uh, I suppose some, some lawyer wrote that. Uh, but it raises more questions than it answers, in my opinion. Uh, but I did, uh, talk with the, uh, the, the, there's a lawyer, uh, who's handling this for the Lodge, and I basically told him this, that I think if it, you know, if it were in court and a judge was trying to decide, uh, the first, uh, the thing that the court would do is say, "We're going to just enforce this exactly the way it's written to the best, best that we can." In my mind, that means the Lodge is entitled to use the rooms as long as the school building is in existence. Uh, I think you could make an argument that when it ceases to be used as a school, uh, you, you could argue that, well, it's not a school building anymore. Uh, I, I don't, I don't hold to that personally. I don't, I think as long as the building is, is there, and certainly as long as it's ours, they're entitled to use it, and, and they are using it, and, uh, so my, my, uh, position on that would be that we, we should continue to recognize their right to use it. Uh, now, the next condition here is, "In the event the building is destroyed by fire or other casualty, the Board is obligated to provide similar rooms in another building, quote, 'replacing' the, uh, Blountville School Building." Now, uh, the only proviso there is if it's destroyed by fire or other casualty. So I, I would say that the interpretation of that would be if, if it's torn down, uh, then that's not fire or casualty, so we would have no, uh, obligation to provide them other rooms. And I guess the other question is, uh, would, uh, the new school where the students were transferred to, is that the building that replaces, uh, the Blountville Building? Uh, so that, that raises a lot of questions, uh, uh, and I don't think there's clear answers to those, uh, but, uh, note that that only, you know, that all that applies to is, is, is destroyed by fire or casualty. Uh, I'm inclined to think court would, uh, say that literally it means a building on that property, uh, which was destroyed by fire or casualty, not another school where students are moved to another location. Uh, I, I would say, uh, if we transfer to, uh, if we were to just auction the, uh, building, uh, it seems the intention is that, uh, uh, that would not be an obligation that ran to a subsequent purchaser. So if, if it was auctioned off and somebody bought it and kept the building, wanted to use it, I, I don't think legally they would be required to honor the, uh, the, uh, um...
Easement.
Ma- maintenance of the easement of, of the, uh, Lodge. Now, I've told their attorney that, uh, their attorney doesn't agree with that. So, uh, we are talking with them about, uh, possible ways to, uh, come to, to a good resolution of that, uh, maybe finding them another place, uh, and, uh, it is my, my suggestion that because there are some legal questions, and I, and I think because they've been, uh, good partners with us, that that would be what we should shoot for. So they're considering, uh, some alternatives, uh, and I'm, I'll hear back from them when I hear back from them, but, uh, uh, the other question that comes up about this property is what's the, um, significance of the fact that, uh, the eminent domain suit was in the name of the county? Uh, I've done a fair amount of research on that. I've also talked with, uh, uh, some other people, including Ben Torries at the T S B A, and, uh, there is a legal argument to be made that whatever the name on the deed is, whether it says Sullivan County or Sullivan County Board of Education, it becomes, uh, school district property. And, uh, obviously, there's an argument to be made that it, it is not. Um, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Torries would lean toward the conclusion that anything that, on which, uh, school is operated should be under the control and considered to be property of the Board of Education. But they're good. I, that's, that's a, uh, uh, an open question in my mind. Uh, I have talked to Mr. Street about that, and, uh, so we're also, I guess, just discussing possible ways to resolve that. Now, just for your, um, uh, recollection, to refresh, refresh your recollection, uh, we had the same thing at Bluff City Middle School, and, uh, we did resolve that by the county selling its parts of the lots and the Board of Education selling it, and, uh, they got the money for their lots, and we got the money for the part that was in the name of the Board of Education. Uh, I think that was a little bit easier to work out because of the, uh, disposition of that property. You know, everybody wanted to, uh, do the best we could do to cooperate to get that done, and, and I don't know that it made a huge amount of difference in that situation because the counties just had, uh, two or three little parts of it. Anyway, uh, I think there's some effort made to, uh, uh, get a meeting together to try to work out a resolution on that part. The, uh, I guess the obvious thing is that if the Board were to vote to sell that property, uh, and there was, uh, difference of poten- of opinion between the county and the Board of Education, you know, probably, uh, would certainly, uh, um, make it less likely people would want to bid on it if they were going to have to, to, uh, get into an argument over who owns what. So, uh, an option, uh, if the Board were inclined to, uh, sell, uh, that, we would do it through public bids as we have done. And, um, if you look at the survey, it's pretty obvious that all of the buildings, uh, are on board, on property that's titled in the name of the Board of Education. So, uh, that would be an option if that was something the Board wanted to do. Uh, there again, uh, might make it less likely that somebody wanted to bid if they knew that the football field could be turned into something else. So, um, just like in pretty much everything else, if, if all these things can be worked out through agreement, I, in my mind, that's certainly the best, best route to go. Um, ultimately, I suppose, uh, you know, it's the kind of thing a court might have to decide about the, the, uh, differences in ownership there, and I, I don't think anybody's aware of any case that has really reached, uh, and decided that question. So, uh, that's not an inviting, uh, way to get it resolved, in my mind. Uh, now, any other, or any, any questions about all that? I mean, I, I realize sort of like law school, they just went through and told you what all the questions were. They didn't tell you the answers. So there's a lot of questions here, but at least you know that's the case.
I've got some comments. Number one, as it deals with the easement, uh, we are currently paying water bill, electric bill for Blountville. And there'll come a time that we need to stop that service. If that service is stopped, then, uh, the Masonic Lodge will not be able to meet in that building. So I think it's important that we make some decisions in the very near future, whether it's tonight or later, about the disposition of the, uh, especially at the Blountville campus. As far as legal answers, uh, there's lots of legal opinions about what you just went over, Pat, and the only way we're going to get a ruling is from the courts, if that's the way it ends up, unless the county chooses to purchase the Blountville campus from us. And I would like for you to consider that as an, uh, for the Board to consider that as an, as a option or a proposal. If the county bought our interest, which I think is a hundred percent of the Blountville campus, now, they just, they disagree on that probably, but, uh, uh, if they bought our interest at the appraised value, then that settles lots of the legal questions that you just mentioned earlier. Uh, it may not settle the, uh, Masonic Lodge question, but it, it would settle whether the county owns or the, uh, school system.
Right, yes, absolutely.
But, uh, it's, in all the readings I've done, it's, it's my opinion that the school system is the owner of the property, whether it's by adverse possession. We have kept those campuses up for many years now, for forty years or longer. I think it's nineteen forty-nine when one of those was, uh...
Right.
Uh, so we've kept those campuses up. We've handled all the expenses on it. Uh, so I think the ruling would be in our favor, but that's just an opinion, uh, a layman's opinion. Uh, if we don't make a motion to do something soon, then all we're doing is kicking the can down the road for someone else to have to deal with, uh, in, in the future. And I don't know how much interest the county has in purchasing, uh, the property. I have been told by a few individuals on the County Commission that they have an interest in this. Uh, again, I don't know, uh, what, what their intentions are concerning that. But one of the things that I would recommend to the Board is to take a look at, uh, making a motion to declare Blountville Campus, uh, surplus, and then if the county does not, uh, have an interest in purchasing it by January the first of twenty-twenty-two, that we go ahead and proceed with the, uh, process to, uh, either turn it over to a real estate agent to sale or to take sealed bids, or to do what we have to do legally to go ahead and, uh, do something with, with the property. But I think it's time to, uh, move forward with the process either way, uh, and give the county the option if, if they have that interest of... the option if they have that interest of laying their snow.
Can I ask you? Is there another part of that process that actually happened? Could the county commission on their side just, I don't know the term, it's not really a quick claim, but could they say that they have no interest in the property and then just revert it to us? I mean, could they, they could officially say it's ours?
Yes, yes.
They could do that, and.
Okay. So, either way, that would still put it in one person's hands, so we got to.
Right. Now, I will say one thing, whatever claim we have, and however you analyze the legalities, I don't think adverse possession comes into play because it doesn't run against the county. It would be my typically, somebody can't take our property as a governmental organization by adverse possession. So, I doubt that that's gonna, that's gonna be the case here. See what I'm saying?
You're saying that we can't declare ownership because of that?
I think, I doubt that, right.
I would, I would probably disagree with that, but I'm not an attorney, so.
Well, I'm not saying we don't have a claim, I'm saying adverse possession typically, okay, I think it's clear that if, if I had been occupying a corner of the courthouse property down there for 50 years, I still can't say I own that by adverse possession because it doesn't work against the county. Now, we're not an individual, we're another county entity, so that might be different. But I would, I would be a little cautious about that. Matthew may have a thought or two on that.
I think the way I'm reading what Pat's saying is not necessarily disagreeing with your factual support for the argument, but just the term adverse possession may not really apply on the, as between governmental bodies. But, I mean, it's clear, it's been in our budget, we maintained it. I mean, another way to think of it is, you know, regardless of what's going on now, would they have had the power to sell that 12 acres in the middle of the school year? I think everybody would think that was pretty ridiculous. So, that's the converse point back as to who really maintained it.
If it hadn't been for the school system, they couldn't have filed an eminent domain charge to begin with, I don't think.
Sure, right. It's gotta be for public purpose, and it seems clearly the purpose was for a school.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
I totally agree with you. I think we've kicked this can down the road long enough, which goes back to one of the comments that I made earlier in the board evaluation. We've discussed this, and discussed this, and discussed it, and discussed it. If, heaven forbid, something happens to the roof at Blountville tomorrow, who's going to be responsible for fixing that? If the water's pouring in like crazy, who's going to fix that? I mean, we're pulling and carrying a burden that we don't need to carry. We've made the hard decision of closing that school and disrupting the lives of children and teachers in the community. That was the hard decision, and we did it because we thought that was best. This should be an easy decision. We need to sell it, we need to move on, we need to get out from underneath the burden, whatever that is. If the commission wants it, wonderful, that would be great. But if not, we still need to get out from under the burden of that. The amount, the amount of minutes that we've spent discussing that over the last several meetings, we need to be talking about instruction and curriculum and how we can improve things, but yet we're, we're just continually treading water on something we don't need to be treading water on. The hard decisions are being made, in my opinion. I think we need to sell and move on.
And this process is complicated even more because we have three facilities on the agenda tonight with Colonial Heights, Blountville, and Sullivan Gardens. And it's important to know that we have several people interested in Colonial Heights Middle School campus. The two that have contacted me, either directly or indirectly, have been school-related. And I have indicated to them that my personal opinion is that we restrict all of the campuses that we plan to sell against the use as a educational facility. Now, again, I have said, that's my personal opinion, I don't know how the board will vote, but I think it's crucial that we put that out there on the table. We have a private school, and we have a public school system interested in purchasing Colonial Heights. But whatever restrictions we place on Colonial Heights, we need to place on all three campuses, just like we did on Houston Valley. So, as we talk about these facilities, what restrictions are we going to place on the use of them? And we've mentioned this before, that if we put it in the restrictions, it goes with the deed. Any comments on that?
Just because we decide to include all the same restrictions don't mean we have to move at the same speed on all the properties, though, does it?
That is correct. But we need, we need to talk about the restrictions all together, as someone, someone said to me the other day about it, what you put on one, you've got to put on the others. But it's crucial that we talk about the three together as restrictions, but then on the speed of selling those, my personal opinion is Sullivan Gardens is going to be the toughest one to deal with, and it may be the last one we deal with, just the way it's located there. Blountville may be the easiest one to deal with, and we've struggled with it already. So, if it's the easiest one to deal with, I don't know what else we're going to do with Colonial Heights. But I was contacted last week about Colonial Heights, and the week before, I was contacted by the private school about Colonial Heights, and there's others out there asking questions about it. So, we don't have to move at the same speed, but we've got to make sure that we talk about them all together. I think Mr. Robinson mentioned that to me at the last board meeting, he said, let's talk about all of them at one time. I think that's what you said, wasn't it, Paul? So, do you want to talk about those restrictions? Is there any feeling from the board of how you feel about the restrictions? Are there any other ones out there that wants to restrict it?
I'm with you, I'm with you on the restriction where our school system can't go in there, any kind of school, because I think we've all seen how that's hurt our system. So, I'm all for that. And there's not much you can do about it, but in my opinion, just what I've seen in my area, it'd be nice if you put in there, because you have to do this, this, or this, what you can. So, I think a restriction you could really put on it is about the school itself, in my opinion.
I agree with you, that's.
I would also think that maybe it would be wise to put restrictions that included medical facilities of, you know, methadone clinics and those type of things that you wouldn't want in a community. That's something I would consider as well. And I agree with Ms. Roush when she says, I think we're ready to move. I think that it wouldn't be wise to move on all three of them at the same time, but I think I'm ready to do something with the Blountville campus, and I think I agree with that we need to include the same restrictions, whatever that turns out to be.
Is there a way to do the school restriction as far as not a public school? Because that's, that would be my main concern, I mean.
I would, I would do a restriction that said no pre-K through 12 if I were making a recommendation. And that keeps the private school out, that keeps the public school out. And doesn't keep out the college. And that's, that's always a possibility, that you have a community college that would move in and do some things, which would be a positive thing. But you've got, you've got to look at this as though it's competitive, no matter which school goes in, if it's pre-K through 12, are they taking students from the public schools, which we are charged with serving? I mean, that's, that's our duty, whether it's a public school that's coming in there or whether it's a private school. They're going to take away students from Sullivan County, potentially. Do we want to have the foresight to restrict it where that does not happen? And that, that becomes the challenge. Now, I know I'm getting pressure from private school, I'm getting pressure from City of Kingsport that there's interest. And, not, not pressure from City of Kingsport, but interest that's expressed. So, again, I just think it's crucial that everybody have the facts as we, as we deal with this. And I said pre-K through 12, head start is a pre-K program, and sometimes you leave yourself open and forget about that. So, my personal preference would be to limit it to pre-K through 12, that we restrict it against that, that use.
If I may, I would add, please keep in mind, as we talk about these facilities, the locations, particularly when we talk about Colonial Heights, or when you talk about Colonial Heights, please keep in mind that Miller Perry sits just down the street. So, thank you.
One thing that I, that you mentioned, Mr. Jones, I didn't, I didn't mention, but I think it's a good point. If, if the board went ahead and had bids on this, the position of the county might change depending on who the successful bidder was. And if, if that appeared to be someone that wanted to make a use of it, like we have seen these other schools, you know, that, that might be more agreeable to everyone. In fact, that could solve all the problems there. Now, whether that, anybody has an interest in doing that or not, but obviously, that's been such a fantastic use of those two properties that we've most recently sold. If that's a possibility for this one, that, you know, who would stand in the way of that, I guess?
If, if the opinion that I read is correct, once we declare it surplus and go to a public bid, then that takes the county out of it as far as, the only way they could purchase it would be to bid it. If we, if we sell it to them ahead of time, then it becomes their decision as to how they, how they deal.
That's right, that's correct.
Am I correct on that?
I believe that is correct.
And we can sell to this, we could sell to the City of Kingsport without going through a bid, because that's been brought to my attention also. And so, it's important for us to understand what the rules are. We definitely don't want to declare it surplus and put it out for bid if the county is interested, and that's why I said, putting a date in there that if they have an interest and want to do something by January the first of 2022, that would allow them to decide if they had that interest or not. And the school system can lease the buildings, the county can also lease the buildings. But right now, I don't think that the board has any interest in being a.
Landlord.
Landlord. I'm not speaking to the board, but I don't, I don't think I've heard that interest expressed. But we're paying expenses right now, and as Dr. Roush said, we're dealing with, what if something happens to the roof? Are we going to let it sit? And, you know, whether damage happen? And winter build is coming up, and I think the heating system still has some issues, we know that. Other comments?
Something I think about is, you know, whoever buys it, they could go out of business or stop operating and sell it to another party, and we could end up where we didn't want to be. So, I, I would, I would exercise extreme caution on some of those properties and think it through very carefully, while the government, the Blountville property don't, it don't put me in that quondrum. I don't, I don't have that concern up here. It's in the middle of the county seat, so if I was a county commissioner, I'd think that'd be property I'd be, I'd be interested in owning, and I wouldn't mind to see that happen with it. But on some of the other properties, taking into consideration their locations, I think we need to be very prudent and careful.
Some county commissioners have expressed an interest in an acre of land off of the Colonial Heights area, that I've mentioned to Mr. Hull about putting an EMS station there. I said an acre, acre, acre and an acre and a half is what they've mentioned to me. I've talked to a couple of different ones that have called about it. And of course, I said, well, it may be for sale. But I don't, I don't know that that's something that, that the board wants to consider, but that, that one needs to be well thought out. Sullivan Gardens is another one. There's been some interest expressed in that, but it's mainly for community service. And I don't, I don't know if there's any interest in doing something there or not.
And my concern with that one, and I'm just expressing concerns here, is we have an elementary school which sits on that property, and.
Share facilities too.
And they share facilities, so.
I do think they got the water line, everything separate, didn't they? Is that, that taken care of?
Charlie's crew got that taken care of. But regardless, that facility, as far as proximity goes, it is right there.
Right against the gap, too, right?
On the, on the same plot of land.
And it may be one that you want to consider demolition of in the future instead of, instead of selling, depending on what the needs are. And I'm not proposing to do that, I'm just saying we have to treat each one individually when it comes to that part of it, or we should because of location.
At the Sullivan Gardens one, is there anything that our maintenance department could use that for? Or you talked about demolition, is there a way to keep the gym for the elementary there? I'm kind of, I think we're all agreeing the same, that whatever goes in there, we're going to have to be real selective, because the elementary is right by us. And I don't think we want to sell to someone and it be an eyesore for to get to our elementary.
The gym in itself presents, and Charlie, chime in anytime you want to, presents some challenges, because it's in the center of the building and everything surrounds it in the building, which makes it more difficult to, I think, do what possibly, and I don't want to put words in your mouth or read your mind, but if we were talking about demolishing a part of the building and leaving that structure, it's, I don't know that that's possible. Of course, I'm, I'm not an engineer, but I'm pretty familiar with that building, went to high school there. But, you know, that building has quite a few challenges as far as pipe, piping within the building goes. I guess one of the good features about it, it's got a new boiler in it. It's not a boiler, what was it we put in, a boiler? I did get that right.
We put a new boiler in, but the main line, last year, we had major leaks throughout the building.
Yes.
So, we might have a boiler sitting there, but you've still got the old ready heat in it, and them steam lines are rotten.
Right.
It would have, basically, you got a new boiler, but it would have to be completely repotted.
Even to, even to, if they're, I would think it would be a huge investment to try to retain, to retain that gym and all the utilities that would go with it, I think you'd probably come out cheaper if you constructed a new gym. So, don't hold me to that, but that would be my opinion, just what I've dealt with, with construction on these two new buildings versus what I see there. If that gym was in, had exterior walls, at least two, or even something of that nature, we, it might be even a, somewhat of a conversation that could be entertained, but I think it'd be very difficult, because that gym is surrounded on all four sides by classroom.
I think, I understand, I see what you're saying now. I think I was thinking that the one side was the outer wall, but I remember now going in and there was bathrooms on each side. I guess maybe I was getting it kind of confused with catcher. I was thinking there's at least one outside wall attached.
Not even in the rear of the building, in the rear of the building, on the backside of the gym is the library. And actually, a couple of classrooms there, too, in art, it was on the backside.
Maybe before we talk about Sullivan, we could take a visit. I've been there, but it's been a while. I'd like to see it, maybe.
And I, I'd like to see it maybe.
Again, I think Sullivan is the one that we need to move the slowest on, just simply because of the location and, you know, even if it's to do something different with it than the others.
Either way, we move on Sullivan Gardens, the football field and the baseball field is attached to the elementary school. Correct. That's how it's deeded, so that wouldn't be a part of anything we do at the middle school.
I can't tell you right off how the property where the football field and the baseball, softball, with that, how that piece of property is deeded, Mr. Hull would have to say.
I do not know, I, I haven't.
Because that's actually across the road, I believe. I, I don't know that it's deeded as Sullivan Elementary or anything like that. I think it's Sullivan County Board of Education. So I think we could separate those two if so, if the board so desired. And what I would add to the, Mr. Hughes' comment about visiting the building, Charlie or I either one would be happy if any of you individually wanted to go and go through that building. We could do that rather than try to take the whole board through that building at one time. I think taking, taking the people through that had an interest individually would be the best situation for us. And we could, we'd certainly make provisions for that.
And even if the deed is not written out correctly, we don't have to sell the entire thing. That it's, we, we could make changes there and do what's best for the school system. So if there's potential use for the school system, I think it'd be a mistake for us to sell it or get rid of any piece of property. Between now and the meeting at 6:30, think about whether or not you want to make a motion to do something tonight as far as restrictions. We've had colonial heights appraised, we've had Bluntville appraised, we've had it surveyed. We had legal research done on it. We've not done a lot with Sullivan Gardens yet, but, but the restrictions, we could do a motion that would, would apply to all and make that part of our minutes if that's, if that's something the board chooses to do.
Those are the mark, these are the Mary. This one's yours. Those are yours. Okay. Give one to each one.
Back to you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Next on the agenda is new business. And actually I only have one item here, and that is our Sullivan County Department of Education operational procedures as it pertains to the health and wellness of students and staff. If you'll recall, we, I prepared this document and you approved that. I wanted to make sure I had the date right. You approved that at our August 26th, 26th board meeting. What you have in your possession right now are two documents. One being, two packets, let me put it that way. One being the first packet that I just mentioned, the operational procedures. What you'll find after that are the, is the Tennessee Department of Health guidelines as it is published and pertains to the state of Tennessee. And then the last document included there is our frequently asked questions. I've included all these documents because I wanted you to have those as we talk through this. The second packet you have is the TSBA packet which came to us early Saturday, which is a summary of the TSBA, it's the TSBA's summary of the legislative notes from the extraordinary session of the 112th General Assembly, which adjourned around 1:30, 2 o'clock in the morning, early Saturday. There were several things that happened during that session, but I want to stay with the ones that immediately affect us as it pertains to this document. The first point that I'll make is if we go back to our additional, our additional operational procedures, I will be recommending the following changes. The first change I will be recommending will be the deletion of number two. And that is, and let me back up real quickly. Let me go back to number one where it says, "We realize COVID vaccinations are a personal decision and we are not requiring COVID vaccinations." If you look at the legislative notes and you look at 14-2-101, and that is on page two, the reference there is, "School districts are prohibited from mandating that a person receives a COVID-19 vaccine. They are also prohibited from requiring proof of vaccination as a condition of access to school premises or facilities or, or a school's products or services." I feel like we have already made that clear, that we are not making that as a requirement. But I did reference that as a part of number one. And I would invite you all to speak up, contribute as I go through this to make sure that if there's something else I need to change, I'll be happy to. Part number two is the part that I'm suggesting, or I'm going to be recommending that we delete. And that references 14-2-104. Schools and school districts shall not require a person to wear a face covering while on school property unless the following conditions are met. There are five conditions listed there, all of which are severe to recommendations that would have some variables that would have to come back to this body before anything could be mandated, instituted, suggested, suggested there. I do anticipate a policy forthcoming from TSBA that we'll be looking at in the future, which I do not have yet, that, in regards to that. But as we go through this document tonight, my recommendation is going to be that number two be eliminated altogether, which in essence would take us out of the mask mandate with the opt-out, which we currently have. So that would become null, null in our school district. Item number three then would become two. The next item, which is the old number four, we already have in there that spectators will not be required to wear a mask, which again references 14-2-104. At the bottom of that page, the old number five, it says that we, as Sullivan County Department of Education, are not recommending or not having any part in the decision-making of quarantine or isolation. That is a Tennessee Department of Health in conjunction with Sullivan County Department of Health process. And it has not been one that we have been participating in. So I think we are truly in compliance already with 14-4-101. And as you look at that, it says, "The Commissioner, Commissioner of Health has the sole authority to determine quarantine guidelines through the rule promulgation process in state law. For purposes of COVID-19, a school does not have the authority to quarantine a person." We have not been doing quarantining, we have not been recommending, we have not been making any of those statements since the publication of this. We, last year, that was something that our school officials did. We contact traced, we did all those kinds of things. And we immediately, that ceased to operate as far as our school district went all this year. So I think we're in compliance there.
On that, the new number four, that first sentence, I mean, I'm not trying to not be transparent, I'm not trying to hide information, but is that still valuable? Is that still, does it take a lot of time? Is it, is it very, I mean, it's just, you know, we're, like, like Mr. Ralph said a while ago, I mean, we're trying to get back to education. So, I mean, it just, if it's, if it's valuable, I'm okay with it. If it's not taking a ton of time, I'm okay with it. I just wonder, is it?
I do think it is valuable. It does not take a lot of time on the part, Shannon Smith does that for us. But the bottom line there, it is a requirement from the State Department of Education that we have to post that. That requirement is coming from the Commissioner of Education. Additionally, I will leave the, I will eliminate number six. That is addressed through the COVID procedures in the, from the Tennessee Department of Health. And I have left those two links in the document. And then I will also eliminate from the old number seven, the following items there about facing in the same direction, the flow of the foot traffic. I did leave seating charts in there because although few and far between, there have been times when the Health Department has asked us for the seating chart. And we did agree to provide those to the Department of Health when requested, although it's been very little. And I do think we can still maintain and leave mask and hand sanitizer stations in every school because right now we have an abundance of those items which were sent to us over the course of the past year. Charlie's grinning. Charlie knows how much hand sanitizer and mask are on hand in our school district. So certainly that is not an issue for us to provide that because it's, it is free. And I have left the remainder of the document as is. I think the information there is suitable for continuing because we do continue to have some challenges with our school nutrition supplies coming in. We've had to change some of our serving pieces. We have to alter our menus occasionally, but that, that in itself is getting better. Everything surrounding the virus and what we've dealt with is improving. This week, when I checked earlier today, we have five cases, five positive cases, which that's huge, a huge improvement, and it continues to get better. So this evening, what I will reckon, be recommending is that we accept, that you accept this document with the changes that I've recommended as it pertains to this new legislation. And at some point, there may be times, there may be a time when we come back to this document. And there will be some policy, I feel sure, forthcoming out of this session from last Friday. So at this time, I'd be open to your questions or suggestions if you have any as to what you would like for me to change or talk about with this document.
I guess mine would be, thank you for being so rapid on getting it together because, I mean, that's a lot of work. And I know it wasn't quick to do that, so thank you.
You're welcome. And there, we will continue to do the best that we can in relation to what is going on. I think our staff, our nurses, our professionals in our building have handled this situation extremely well, especially this year. Having the mask mandate with an opt-out has gone very smoothly for our school district. This change, that we will still have students and staff who make the choice, and that's perfectly fine. I think that's everyone's choice and I'll certainly support anyone who has that choi, who makes that choice. We've not dealt with any adverse situations in regard to those who, who choose to or not, or choo, or who don't choose to. So thank you. And Mr. Jones, that's all I have for the work session except to say that we do have drinks, chips, some pizza, some garlic breadsticks upstairs in 212 for you as, so that you don't have to worry about your 6:30 meeting. Although your 6:30 meeting may not be a long one, but please feel free to partake in that because it's here for you.
Let me give you the committee assignments before you go for the break. And then if you have, want to change something, let me know and we can work that out. If you don't like your assignment, you can, on the rest of the call, see if you'll change with you. Did you notice, Dr. Ralph, that you've got two assignments now?
I did, sir. Is that what happens after the first year's over?
That's what happens when Mr. Gilmore leaves us. Any, any comments or questions before we go up for the break and come back at 6:30 for regular meeting?
Did I make you mad? I'm not on here.
The collaborative conference, you are on there, but this, this was changed. We thought, we thought collaborative conference was going to take place, so I took it off. But.
I just saw what on here. Why'd you mad?
And no, and I, let me follow up on that. Mr. Arson, to have collaborative conferencing, they were to present us with the 15% of the signatures by the end of October. Actually, what happened is they turned those signature sheets into Ms. Buckles'. Ms. Buckles had them in an envelope on her desk and they ended up, we got to talk about them yesterday or actually Tuesday. So we, we now, and depending upon how it goes when we meet and actually have the vote to see if there's 50% or better. But yes, I knew that you would be there. So thank you.
And is there another one that you wanted added to? Actually, I sent it in and we realized we didn't think we had enough signatures and we took it off.